Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the August 13th City Council meeting. We're going to start off having the city clerk establish a quorum and call the meeting to order.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Councilmember Barton.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Mayor Protem Landrum.
Here.
And Mayor Wixson.
Here. Thank you. With that, we're going to take a real quick moment of silence. And with that, we will move to the Pledge of Allegiance. And I see Ray here. You want to lead us in the pledge, right?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everyone. And sorry, we got started a few minutes late. We were in closed session a little late. With that, I will go to Mr. Newmeyer, if he's ready, to report out on our closed-session meeting.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. The City Council met today in closed session for two items. First one was a review of with real property negotiators for the property known as generally the wastewater treatment facility. And council had productive discussion, asked me to report out that the council continues to move forward working with Cayucus on figuring out the future of that site. Council also met in closed session for anticipated litigation. And this was pursuant to the receipt of a Brown Act Care Correct Letter that the council received for a closed session on July 10th. And council directed response to be sent to the sender of the letter, saying that council wants to reaffirm that no final action was taken, that any community benefits agreement that the council potentially could pass would be pursuant to review at a public meeting, public input would be sought, and that there was absolutely no community benefit agreement made by council. And also that the response that was authorized to be sent back to Vistra was tentative and non-binding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Newmeyer. With that, we will go to mayor and council member reports. And I will start to my right with Councilmember Barton.
I'm delighted to hear that we are continuing our negotiations with Cayucus. That's been a long, like a thorny kind of a relationship, and I'm very glad to hear that that's progressing.
I just wanted to report out that the Offshore Wind Subcommittee, Mayor Wixson and myself, met with one of the wind developers, Equinor, and I believe that was last week, the 30th. And they wanted to let us know that they have completed the first phase of their geophysical survey in the federal waters in their lease area. That took them three months, and it told them about the seabeds in that area. They said it was very successful, and there was no safety or environmental incidents. They said the seabed conditions are suitable for offshore wind. Their next step would be to do the nearshore surveying, which they do have permits for, but they are not going to start that until they have some permitting still that they needed to work out with tribal permits. And they will start that in, I think they said, spring of next year, 2025, when after Dungeness crab season, gray whale migration and different fishing concerns are out of the way. And then that portion of it will only take a few weeks rather than three months. So I just wanted to report that out. And then also, on last Monday, I went to check out, I had never done this before, and I checked out the once-a-month Monday showers that are held at the library, and that was interesting. I also grabbed the mayor, and we went to community dinner on Monday night, last Monday night, too. And that was, I hadn't been in a while, and it was nice to check in there, too.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
The only announcement I have is that I'm excited for the new school year to start. And so just keep an eye out on those kiddos on the streets, riding their bikes and walking. It starts on the 15th, so just being aware of our surroundings, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards.
Mayor, if you will, I'd like to reserve my time for the Subcommittee reports.
Thank you. So I will share some of the things that were already shared, the meeting with Equinor, cross that off. I had an opportunity to visit out at Casa de Flores and had a wonderful conversation with many in the community. I was able to share the city manager, Ms. Kimball's citywide updates that she does. I made copies of that and took out to allow them an opportunity to see what's going on within our city beyond just looking at the Bay news. So they really appreciated that and had a great conversation. About 15 of them there to visit with, so that was very nice. I attended a breakfast with the labor unions in San Luis Obispo that was hosted by Assembly Member Addis. Mayor Protem Landrum went, and Councilmember Ford was there in her other capacity. So it was a great opportunity to meet and network with several people there. I want to thank the Police Department, Morro Bay Police Department, as well as our other city departments, the Fire Department and others, for National Night Out. It was a wonderful event, a little chilly, but what a great turnout, what a great event and collaboration with our community and our public safety, and it was just really amazing. Thank you for all that, Chief Watkins and your team, really great.
Mayor, I think it was really cool that KSBY reported from our event, for an hour, I think they were like in and out, and so I just wanted to give you kudos for that. Whoever locked that in, amazing.
Yeah, they just showed up. It was great. I have upcoming tomorrow, a SLOCOG meeting, San Luis County governments. Tomorrow night, I would remind, and the chamber's here to do a presentation, the Chamber mixer is down at the Maritime Museum. Friday, I will be attending the San Luis County Mayor's meeting. I have great news to share. Thank you to Ms. Kimball and the city staff, the team. We have gotten back to our last-hour addition on City Hall and Public Works. We are now there from 8:00 to 5:00 with the doors open. Should make it a little easier for everyone who's trying to get in and pay some bills or ask some questions or turn in some permits and things in the building department. So I appreciate the staff working with us and making that happen. And lastly, I want to talk about the 60th anniversary for the city of Morro Bay coming up. Thank you. The city clerk is putting a flyer up so everyone can see. We have three days of events, Tunes at Tidlens, that again, our active senior group will be doing and working with some of the other local organizations. Visit Morro Bay is a huge sponsor in helping put this event on. Friday, we will be at the Morro Bay Art Association. The Chamber of Commerce is working with the downtown merchants and engaging them and including them in that. We'll have music and Dahlia, a Dahlia show, which is our city flower. And the Dahlia Society from San Luis Obispo County will be participating in that. And then Saturday morning, we'll kick off with the Founder's Day Parade at 10:00 a.m. There are applications available. There's a scan code you can get off of the website and/or call down at the Rec Department. We're looking for, this to really be a fun community day and get groups to participate. Followed up after that will be a family fun day down at Tidlens Park. We'll have hot dogs and drinks and games and music and lots of things going on from 12:00 to 4:00. So I look forward to seeing everyone down there. Please come, bring your friends, bring your family, and think about being in the parade. With that, thank you very much. I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one thing to add. I have been staying in contact, close contact with Visit Morro Bay, and I wanted to let the audience know that we have been, City of Morro Bay has been getting a lot of attention from international office, including events organizers and international media TV stations. So I filled all these inquiries and sending them to Michael Mumble, Visit Morro Bay, and we'll get some attention. We'll see how that going to pan out for our city.
Thank you, City Manager Kimball. With that, we will move on to our Subcommittee reports. And first up on the list will be, is there anything, Mr. Qualick, for water reclamation?
There's no update.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will move on to power plant update with Vistra. Eirlen.
Eirlen Singwald, Community Development Director. I don't have a Subcommittee reporter update to provide. Staff did receive a letter from Coastal Commission on the Vistra Best Project, so I'm able to answer questions on that, but no other update to provide.
Thank you, sir. And that's been posted on the city website?
The letter from Coastal, I don't believe it has been posted on the website. We can post it. I believe it's available on Coastal Commission's website. We can post it on the Community Development Department webpage as well.
Please, thank you. And I think Councilmember Edwards wanted to add in.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to also respond with regard to the letter that we received. This was a letter that basically was a response to a previous letter that I think we received in May. And, you know, the Vistra Subcommittee, along with staff, had various questions. I know I had questions with regard to the first letter that we received that was definitely up on the website. And so this was a very, I mean, we were eagerly anticipating the receival of this letter and hopefully getting a meeting with the Coastal Commission as well. And so one thing that I just wanted to say on behalf of myself, I can't speak for the rest of the Subcommittee, but I just wish that we had had this letter, you know, in more timely fashion. It would have been wonderful to have been able to have it before the staff and Subcommittee to digest it, take it in, and then be able to have a Subcommittee meeting to report out tonight. So I just wanted to convey that in terms of how I felt. And I just also wanted to thank Mr. Singwald and the Vistra Subcommittee for putting energy and really driving that forward to get a response to their initial letter and to get a meeting. So, anyway.
Thank you, Councilmember Edwards. And you can speak for me on that, that's fine. Offshore wind energy, again, there's nothing to share to update. As Councilmember Landrum reported out, we've only had one conversation over the last several months with that company. And then Downtown Design District, anything since the last meeting, Mr. Singwald?
So, very briefly, so at the last meeting on July 23rd, we got direction from council to hold one additional ad hoc Subcommittee meeting and one public forum. I did just yesterday send out the invite to the Subcommittee members for August 29th to have that final ad hoc Subcommittee meeting for Downtown Design District.
Thank you for that. Appreciate it.
I'd like to add to that report as well, Mayor. I wanted to also thank Mr. Singwald and City Manager Kimball and staff for honoring the commitment that was previously made by Planning Department Director Scott Graham, as well as that was passed along to Michael Codron. And that was to honor this group's work, to allow for another meeting and a public input forum. I am hoping personally, and I'm sure Mayor Protem Landrum has thoughts on this as well, but I'm hoping that with that, you know, final meeting and the input from the public, that we'll have some sort of report that will be a great reference document that we can look to and cross-reference with our DWSP as well, which was done in 2016, as well as hopefully getting some recommendations and actionable items out of that to be recommended to council. So looking forward to that discussion again.
Thank you. And Mayor Protem, did you have anything you wanted to add to that Subcommittee report?
No, I don't. I'm looking forward to it as well. Thank you.
With that, we are going to move on to...
The harbor advisory board meeting.
Go ahead.
Maybe Mrs. Kimball would like to, I don't want to...
Did you want to report out? She wanted to report?
I didn't report out on the harbor advisory board meeting.
Under your council, yeah.
I didn't know if you were going to do that.
Yeah, West Mayor Landrum, I think that should be, since you are the liaison to the...
Okay. Well, you were the acting.
I would take along. I'll let you...
Or Chief McCrayne.
Yeah. So perhaps I should, I should thank you, Mayor Protem Landrum, and I should clarify something, that since last week, was last week or two weeks ago, we had a half-meeting. And at that meeting, I have announced that on effective August 1st, Chief McQueen is double duty as interim harbor director while we determine the next steps. And it was a pleasure to see Mayor Protem Landrum at half-meeting, and with that, I give it to you to report what that has to go about.
Right. Well, I just, we had an interesting presentation by the National Estuary Program where we found out that there's now 750 acres of eelgrass, and the entire back bay is covered with eelgrass. It's amazing. And then we heard reports from the ad hoc committees, and one was on the mooring fields, and it sounds like they're working that out, you know, adjusting the lengths of the mooring chains and things like that. It's kind of a work in progress, I think. And then the other one was the ad hoc committee that was working on the commercial vessel fees. I can't talk. And they found that there's some room to, that it's possibly worth looking at charging more per linear foot for vessels. They're waiting for some request from us to pursue that. They would like to pursue that. They found that we are, you know, we're charging the same price for everyone. The intent is not to charge fishing vessels, it's to charge luxury vessels and maybe survey vessels and things like that. And I would like to, you know, in my opinion, I think we should pursue that, but they're waiting for council direction on that.
With that, we will move on to our presentation this evening, which is going to be provided for a quarterly review from the Morro Bay Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having me. I am Jocelyn Brennan. I'm your, oh, this is loud. I'm your interim CEO at the Morro Bay Chamber. I do have permission to give a little bit of a spoiler tonight, that we are in the process of hiring the permanent CEO, and I think we have a really great candidate. So the tentative start date is August 23rd, and I will stay on for a few weeks to train her. And so I wanted to say that in context of some of the things I'm going to go over this evening. She will be hitting the ground running, and I wish I could have brought, the timing didn't work out to bring her tonight and announce, because we still have some formalities to get through, but I think everyone's going to be really happy, and she's going to be great for the businesses and for the city. Having said that, I will sort of go through May through July, because my last update to you was in May. So I'll go through some of our activity and economic development for those three months, talk about some of our new initiatives under the next contract, and then talk about some dates moving forward. We will be reporting quarterly on our economic development activities in person, and then every month in writing to the council. Thought I would, just for review for the folks that are here and watching at home, talk about who we are. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(6). We have 12 board members, three full-time staff. We have about 12 folks on the Government Affairs Committee, made up of different business types from different locations throughout Morro Bay. We have an eight-member Ambassador Committee, who does a lot of volunteer work in the business community. And then 84% or more at this moment of all those good folks live and vote in Morro Bay. We have a little over 300 members, that number fluctuates, that represent about 2,800 jobs. This is our Board of Directors. We do have one vacancy right now that will be filled before the end of the year, and applications are open for board members for the 25 Board of Directors. And I have to add that there's one headshot that we don't have, which is Lexi Jacobs, and she is from Morro Bay Boat Rentals. And so I'm sorry that she's, we don't want to leave her out, but she is a board member on there. This is our amazing staff. Jody and Lindsay are here tonight. I'd like to embarrass them a little bit. I always say that the Chamber is small but mighty, and these two do amazing work for the business community. Lindsay is our Director of Membership. She's the one that is out, boots on the ground, meeting with businesses. She's often the very first person that the businesses call when they need something, and she's often the very first person that they meet when they're a new business in town. And then Jody is our Communications Director, and she has done an amazing job at not only communicating to the region about all the great businesses in Morro Bay, but she also does a fantastic job of communicating to the businesses of all the things that the Chamber and our nonprofit partners have to offer for them, for education and workforce development and all the resources. So I thought I would just talk a little bit about by our numbers. I'm not going to go through all of that, but I did want to mention that we had 62 businesses participate in the shop Sidmanstroll. That's very popular, so that's a growing event, and it's great because it puts actual, you know, the traffic into the local businesses. And so I think that's why it's growing. And then I know many of you have attended. It's just a really fun event. We have featured 20 businesses in our property walks and talks, and then also we've highlighted 24 businesses in our monthly Spotlight Awards. Who do we serve? We serve a lot of small business owners. 62% of our members have five employees or fewer. So Morro Bay really is made up of a lot of small businesses. We work with several regional partners. We work with Reach's Economic Development Practitioners Network, the Governor's Office of, the California Office of GoBiz, that's the Governor's Office of Economic Development. We work with SCORE, which is a nonprofit organization that provides mentorship to businesses, and they do a lot of fantastic workshops. The Women's Business Center, Cal Poly's Economic Development Council, the SBDC, or Small Business Development Center, which has a lot of great programming, they're state-funded, the Workforce Development Board of SLO County, and then with Cal Poly, the Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship. And of course, our tourism partners, Visit Morro Bay and SLO Cal. So for the last three months, I went back and looked at our business assistance. We've directly assisted several businesses each month, and these, we don't necessarily track the one phone call type of assistance efforts. These are things that take up a considerable amount of staff time and sometimes take several days or weeks to assist the businesses. And this is when they sort of hit a roadblock, either as a business owner, they don't know what to do their next step, what kind of license they need, what kind of permit they need, or they've had trouble renewing their business license or don't know who to contact at the city. The variety of things that we assist them with is very varied. The regional meetings we've attended are listed here. That number will go down in our new contract. We're committed to attending on behalf of the Morro Bay businesses 12 meetings a year, but we will work, the new CEO will work that out with the city of, if the Chamber can't be there, making sure someone from the city will be representing the city at those regional meetings. It's really important for the city of Morro Bay and the businesses especially to have a seat at the table in those regional conversations. In addition to providing resources, we also do quite a bit of business education. And since I've been here as interim, I've seen the breakfast on the bay, the speakers and the topics have just been really fantastic. So if you haven't had a chance to make it to that yet, I really encourage you to do so before the end of the year. We do have a virtual option as well now. But our last three was Mastering Money, a seminar on finance, strategic planning, and the power of LLCs. In June, we had a really amazing breakfast on the bay, covering diversity and education in business, a prideful seminar showcasing LGBTQ+ entrepreneurs and educational excellence. And then in July, we did Business Brilliance, unveiling the tapestry of small business success stories. And we still have August, September, and October. So you are all invited to that. The other thing we do is we share a lot of information. I skipped a slide. There we go. We share a lot of information through social media, and not all chambers do this, but this is a priority for our chamber, because a lot of the small businesses do not have a marketing budget or someone to run their social media, and so we do a lot of promotion for them. And recently, we just checked again, and our engagement has gone up by over 3,000, right? Which is a big jump in the social media world. So it's a great exposure for the local businesses. Since I last presented an update in May, I think a couple of weeks after that was our annual gala, so I wanted to thank the council for attending that, and a lot of the city staff was there as well. It was a great evening. With that, I thought I would move on to some of the things, the scope that's in the new contract. Business attraction, one of the items in the new scope under business attraction is a site selection database. So the new CEO will work really closely with the Community Development Department and with the City Manager's Office to put together a live database that the city will have access to, as will the Chamber, of those vacant properties or vacant building, commercial spaces, so that when a business is looking either to expand or locate in Morro Bay, we have a list of those opportunities, the square footage, the best point of contact for that, its location, and sort of its, you know, amenities and what it has to offer. I would like to congratulate the city on hiring Eirlen. I've worked with him for over 10 years. I'm a little sad that, right as I'm phasing out, he's phasing in, but I'll make the connection with the new CEO. And that will be in development probably in the next few weeks and hopefully be ready to launch and be updated regularly in September. Another item in the scope is a business retention effort to do a survey of the businesses in Morro Bay. We did this, I did this in Grover Beach when I was at the South County Chambers. So this will go out, right now, we determined it's not the best time for it to go out, because all the Morro Bay businesses is sort of, they're just trying to keep their head above water right now. But in the fall, we will launch this, and this is asking businesses, how are you doing? Are you planning on hiring? Are you planning on laying people off? Are you expanding? If you're retiring, do you have a succession plan? Are you looking for a new space? And when we did this in the past, it really brought out a lot of really good information. So I will have that ready to go for the next CEO and then launch it after the summer season, after things quiet down a little bit. And then that will generate a report, which we will obviously share with the city. As part of that, we will also do the industry sector meetings with the city staff and city council. This is sort of a new version of, in the past, we did the listening tours. So this will be, instead of the listening tours in the past, it will be still a listening tour, but it will be by industry sector. So that will be in conjunction with the city, which industries we want to do first, but that will go, we'll put that together and make sure that those representatives from that, those industries that are specified are in attendance. Another thing that happened at our last council meeting was having some advertised office hours at the Chamber. I think after COVID, our office hours weren't the same as they were pre-COVID, so we do have, we're there much more than this, but these are times that people know staff will be there if they need to come drop off an application or if they have a question, and those are advertised now on the outside of the building. And they can always make an appointment if those times don't work for them. Another thing that was from that new scope and the new contract for economic development was just as Chamber support staff helping with city events as needed. And so it's been, it's been really great to assist the city with their 60th anniversary events that are planned. Jody's been on the committee and helping with the organization and the graphic design. And then I have a couple save the dates for you. We do have our breakfast on the bay, August 21st. It's creativity unleashed spotlight... It's Creativity Unleashed Spotlight on Artistic Triumphs and Inspiring Journeys. We have a great speaker lineup for that. And then our normal Shop Sip and Stroll that we would have done in the fall, we have shifted this to a holiday Shop Sip and Stroll. And so, we are really encouraging the businesses to decorate for the holidays. We know that that can be, it's sort of a time where the, we don't have as many tourists, so we're hoping to really encourage the community to shop local and get a lot of participation and make it different than the typical Shop Sip and Strolls, because it'll be holiday-themed. And that is Friday, November 8th, Fairland Barcadero, and then downtown, Friday, November And I'm sure that there are questions. I know I flew through that. But I wanted to, first of all, say thank you to the Council. I feel like our, this new scope of work for economic development, I think there'll be a lot of great deliverables for the city and for the Chamber and for the business community, but also, I think it's much more measurable. And so, we will look forward to seeing some of those boxes checked. And I've already shared it with the new CEO, and she's excited to get started.
Thank you, Jocelyn. I appreciate that. Any questions?
I have a question, or two. Hi, Jocelyn.
Hi.
I am curious, what are the, like, there's so few, five, eleven, and six in three months of the direct business assistance, and I'm wondering if there's a common thread?
Yeah. And again, we don't track the, you know, if someone calls with a question, we answer it. We don't keep track of all of those. But there has been a lot of questions about business license renewals, and we're seeing a theme even among those questions. And a lot of the businesses were used to a physical license coming in the mail and being able to come to the city and, you know, pay. And so, oftentimes, I think I just answered probably two this week, business license questions where they had called and said, you know, I never got my business license. And then I kind of walk them through, going through their spam and their email, and then there it is. So, it's a training opportunity, and it's just, it's just going to take time. We've shared that information through our newsletter with the businesses, and they're starting to tell each other. But it is digital now, and so that just takes some getting used to.
And these are, all businesses or just Chamber members?
All.
Yeah. I've had the same issue, so I was thinking that's what you were going to say.
Yeah. That's a lot of them.
And then my other question is, can you explain why the regional meetings are important?
I'll try.
For, you know, like, for the city, why is that important?
Yeah. I'll try. That's a great question. There's just a lot of conversations going on around regional economic development. So, for instance, you know, a couple of the big projects that are proposed here, other things that would affect the city. And it's important not only for the city to have a seat at the table and know what's going on, be in the loop, but a lot of times, there's opportunities. There's, you know, I hear at some of these meetings that there's grant-funding opportunities, that there's legislation that would affect local cities, including Morro Bay. Oftentimes, we hear about upcoming conferences and things, and it is important to stay in the loop on all of that. And sometimes, the best way to do that is to be at those meetings. And then the other thing I would say is that just having someone there that's representing Morro Bay specifically, because what's best for the region might not be best for Morro Bay. And it's nice to have the Chamber there in particular, because we're not just looking out for Morro Bay, but we're specifically looking out and thinking about the concerns of the business community of Morro Bay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Jocelyn?
Actually, I had on my list of questions here to ask about the same thing that you were asking regarding, like, what's the most common question? And my second part of that is, do you ever, since we're not a hundred percent local business, do you ever, does your staff ever spend time having to assist businesses from the outside? Or is it a hundred percent local business that you're finding yourself assisting?
Yeah. That's a good question. It's typically local, but I will say, I think this week, we got two or three calls, maybe the, I should say this month, we got two or three calls about businesses that were interested in locating in Morro Bay. And a lot of times, they don't know where they want to be yet. They just know maybe they want to be on the Central Coast, or maybe there are already an existing business in Paso, and they want to expand to the coast. And so, we will kind of talk them through, well, what are you looking for? You know, how many employees would you need? You know, and we just walk them through that. And what's nice is that, you know, oftentimes, they're calling other cities too, and they're just sort of testing the water and deciding on where they want to be. So, having this database that has the available properties at our fingertips where we can, you know, just send them some information quickly, I think will make Morro Bay really competitive for new business.
Thank you, Jocelyn. That's great.
Thank you. Thank you, Jocelyn. I agree. I think it's always important for us to be at those regional meetings. Thank you. And I want to do a shout-out really to, you know, the efforts that are helping us right now. Jody's been really active on our sixtieth anniversary committee, and I really appreciate your time and expertise you're bringing. Thank you for that. And the graphics are great. Thank you. With that, I'm going to open public comment. I have some speaker slips to start with, five of them, and after that, it'll be general public comment. I'll start with Ed Serpa, and that'll be followed by Aaron Oaks, please.
City Council Mayor, my name's Ed Sparra, and I live on Main Street above Tylands Park. And it's not the first time you've seen my face here, and I'm here to lobby just once again. But I understand it's not the highest priority the city has to deal with, but it's an important thing for you and me and everybody in our city. The traffic on Main Street and all over Morro Bay has really gotten to be pretty crazy. And I came here beginning, two years ago, to say it's too much traffic. Well, the traffic's not going to stop. The problem is the speed. Okay? I'm, I live on Main Street. I'll pull out of my driveway. By the time I put it in park or in drive and want to go forward, I've got somebody in my trunk. Okay? It's very intimidating, especially when you're seventy-six, okay? To be very honest with you. And with that, I'm going to turn a little bit more to a positive note. I've talked with the Public Works Department, and they are going to slow down the speed from thirty to twenty-five. It's supposed to happen sometime in September, and I think that that's great. Along with that, they're talking about maybe putting a sidewalk, yes, on Main and Olive, because of the traffic that's going to be going down to Tylands Park. And that's in the works, he says, so that's really encouraging. I would like to see, if I could lobby a little more, maybe with you guys and Greg, is that to restripe the street, we need to have a double lane that people realize they can't go around. Right now, people are going around bikes. Okay? They don't stop, and when they go around bikes, they go faster. Okay? I've lived there twenty-seven years. I've watched this grow. And again, I think what I'm doing is just trying to put my face out in front of you, so hopefully, I can email you and maybe have you lobby with me. I thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Ed.
Good evening, Council and staff. Aaron Oaks from Morro Bay. So, a couple of days ago, I took a look at an op-ed written by Bob Fowler, who is another board member of the Chamber that supports the battery storage project. What a shocker, right? So, and he was talking about the importance of generating revenue with projects like this. And he says, if we don't, we're going to go bankrupt. Unfortunately, he has a particularly childlike understanding of the public process, so I would like to educate Mr. Fowler and the people at home what the public process is and the issues with this. So, we as a city, we cannot look at the shiniest object that's presented to us and think it's going to be providing all the solutions that we need. Of course, we need revenue-generating projects, you know, that's a given, but we have to do our due diligence on that. The problem is that Vistra contributed to this community in bad faith. And they contributed to this community in bad faith because they gave us an EIR that's practically incomplete. For instance, Vistra did not go into detail about the thermal runaway issues that we have with this. They did not evaluate alternatives for the project and alternative technologies. We're just stuck at combustible batteries right now. You know, combustible toxic batteries. And there's article after article that we've seen in the news that discuss these issues at great length. So, people in the public have talked about it at great length. And so, when you talk about revenue-generating projects, we have to be really, really careful about how we approach them. And you don't have to take my word for that. Look at the Coastal Commission. Now, I apologize, you know, for people being blindsided by the Coastal Commission letter, but here's the thing. The Coastal Commission did submit a comments to the DEIR that kind of touched on a lot of the issues that we saw in the August 2nd letter. So, the writing's on the wall. The Coastal Commission doesn't have a real favorable view of this project. And the thing is, even if Vistra goes to the California Energy Commission over this, they still have to go through the California Coastal Commission, and there's a lot of hurdles that the Coastal Commission has identified as problems with the project. So, I hope, you know, Mr. Fowler pays attention to the information that's coming out here, and I wish him the best of luck, and I really like what he did with the Morro Bay Landing project, and he did a great job, but he needs to do some homework, and it's fast.
The next three speaker slips I have are Tina Metzger, Linda Winters, followed by Rachel Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. I'm Tina Metzger, President of Morro Bay. I'm here to sort of reiterate my letter to you that I sent yesterday concerning directing staff to establish development standards, reciting battery, energy, storage systems in our town and also in our sphere of influence. As time goes on, we're learning a lot more about this new technology. I'm also asking that the Mayor direct the City Manager at the next possible meeting to prepare and bring back an ordinance, temporarily pausing any new BES project applications from being accepted pursuant to Government Code Section 65858 as an urgency measure to protect public health, safety, and welfare. This pause shall include an additional one-year extension to be executed until BES development standards have been adopted by the City of Morro Bay. Battery, energy, storage systems, BES projects may pose significant health, safety, and environmental risks to surrounding communities, especially when located within or near existing residential neighborhoods. Acute noise nuisance, to fire, and thermal runaway hazards are only a few of these risks. The city must adopt standards and guidelines for citing BES projects that consider their unique operating characteristics, potential health and safety risks, and appropriateness for locating BES within close proximity to existing neighborhoods and businesses, schools, tourist locations, and other sensitive receptors. And then, on the bottom of my letter, I included a link to what San Diego County is doing. New York State is also approaching this exact same issue. And so, I'm asking for a pause in accepting any proposals concerning these new battery, energy, storage systems within our town and within our sphere of influence. And I would appreciate that very much if you could do that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members, City Staff, and the Chiefs. I'm Linda Winters, thirty-year resident in the St. Mobile Home Park right here in Morro Bay. And in the last three weeks, I feel we probably all have watched some, or at least most of the Olympics. I saw everything I possibly could see, making me feel the unity of our world that we really needed. I was particularly thrilled with the final event of the 2024 Olympics, the Women's Marathon. Twenty-six-point-two grueling miles, one in record time. That's incredible. An interesting fact, gold medals won at the Olympics, forty-eight percent of them were won by women. And in this vets hall, sitting in front of this audience, we have an estrogen overload. Woman power at the city level. Sorry, gentlemen. Here's a little-known fact about myself. I was born and raised in a little town called Ashland, Massachusetts. It's twenty miles southwest of Boston. The Boston Marathon was first run in eighteen ninety-five and started in my little hometown. Two years later, they added three miles to the starting point in Hopkinton, Massachusetts, making it an official Olympic-length marathon. Elite runners from all over the world ran this course every single year, the third Monday of April, for a hundred and twenty-eight years. When I was a kid, we walked to the end of the road where I was raised and watched five-hundred sweaty men run past us and continuing on twenty-three more miles into Boston, getting ready for the Olympics. As we were kids, we had the rest of the day off from school. Now, in 2024, I can say how proud I am to be from Ashland, Massachusetts, and a woman, and I think I'm a gold medal winner because I live here in Morro Bay. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Council Members and Staff. My name is Rachel Wilson. Today, I would like to thank Arlen Singhwald and staff for asking the California Coastal Commission for guidance on issues regarding the proposed BES. Today, I'm going to comment on a four-page letter from August 2nd, 2024, that the Coastal Commission wrote in response to his request. Next slide, please. Regarding the master plan, I have attended meetings on the master plan where it was insinuated that the BES was a given due to deed restrictions. Note that the Coastal Commission does not even mention deed restrictions, and they state that we need to, quote, "identify all potential allowable uses, including visitor-serving, commercial, recreation, open space, and housing along with industrial uses." They also note that the development needs to avoid sensitive habitats and coastal hazards. Next slide, please. They also cleared up the misconceptions regarding AB 205. Yes, Vistra can apply through the CEC, but the, quote, "application under AB 205 would not supersede the authority of the CCC." The CCC must approve any project, and most importantly, their approval must be consistent with the Coastal Act. Next slide, please. In their letter, the Coastal Commission noted that the proposed, quote, "battery storage at such an important opportunity site in the city raises a host of issues." Their chief biologist, who I met at the CCC meeting, noted that is likely the best area in question constitutes environmentally sensitive habitat, or ESHA, under the Coastal Act, and that coastal hazards such as sea-level rise are acute. BES does not qualify for shoreline armoring because it is not an existing structure, and it is not coastal-dependent. They state that BES can readily be sited at inland locations, not near the coast. Next slide, please. And finally- And finally, the CCC concludes, this is a quote, "It also appears clear that the proposed BES site is subject to significant coastal resource constraints that need to be evaluated in any case, some of which, at the current time, appear to preclude such a use development altogether under the Coastal Act and LCP." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Linda, thank you for that inspiration. Public comment is open?
I've lived in this town twice as long as I've lived anywhere else, nearly half my life. I had felt hopeful when I first moved here because my grandfather had always said California was full of, quote, "hippies, freaks, and weirdos." Took me two to three years, but I eventually realized that, in fact, the exact same problems exist here as where I moved from. However, they are disguised with a veneer of morality. Many of my neighbors tell me that some of the things that I say bring fear into their hearts, and I say, "You should be afraid." They tell me that we can save ourselves by being good and kind, by turning the other cheek. They have never been tortured for failing to exist as expected. They have never been beaten and mutilated. The town that I moved here from was run by a man named Jerry Falwell. Some of you might be familiar with that name, as his philandering was so legendary, there exists a documentary about it. George Washington also had a summer home there. However, a far more interesting local landmark would be the long hall of the Wolves of Vinland, neo-Nazis that engage in pagan rituals, animal sacrifice, and train in street fighting and urban warfare. Now, a block from my house, there flies a colonial flag with a Blue Clux Klan flag to boot, and two houses up, a Gadsden flag. Even more nerve-wracking is an Appeal to Heaven flag. When my neighbors are listening to people like Kevin Roberts of the Heritage Foundation say, quote, "We are in the process of a second American revolution, which will be bloodless if the left allows it to be," or Tucker Carlson and Michael Knowles, who said, quote, "For the good of society, transgenderism must be eradicated from public life entirely." I know full well, the only way to keep myself safe is to be possessed of the capacity to bring to bear a propensity of force. I must always be ready to flee or fight should someone lay hands on me, but I know that will never be enough to save myself. Far more terrifying than a knife in the dark is fire from the sky. Violence is human, but genocide is the work of authority. On August 6, the dogs of the state have their national night out, and I think of the 200,000 dead in Hiroshima and Nagasaki. I think of the Hiba Kusha. As the specters of a world aflame rise again, I look to people like the brave community anti-fascists who came out in the UK to stand against violence when the police couldn't or wouldn't. Sabemos que estamos condenados. Yo digo que somos nuestros sabadores. As for the Olympics, I accidentally caught about two minutes of it at the bar, and I have to say, somebody's living in an echo chamber because it is extremely divisive.
My name's Michelle Lester-Caterre. I live in North Morro Bay. Mayor, staff members, I just simply have a comment. How many rate hikes of any type can income-constrained folks in Morro Bay tolerate? After all, our Morro Bay water rates went up after the new sewer plant. Our PG&E rates have already gone up this year, and if Diablo is extended, rates will only go up after January. Even as PG&E posted over a $2 billion profit last year, when is enough enough? In order to extend the lie of Diablo Nuclear Power Plant, PG&E filing for another rate increase is such a large bill, $10 billion for five years, that customers of two other utility companies, in addition to us, PG&E customers, are slated to increase their bills to help pay this price tag. The $10 billion cost for extending Diablo five years makes that the single largest public investment in one source of energy that the state will have ever approved. Here is a quote from State Senator Laird. "The question of whether Diablo Canyon Power Plant should continue to operate until 2030 is a momentous question," which leads to two additional momentous questions. First, is Diablo energy really necessary to ensure California's grid reliability in light of all the new renewable energy projects online? Second, is this a wise move for ratepayers? He continues to answer to the first question. I have to deter to the experts, the California Energy Commission, CEC, right now. CEC is telling us Diablo energy is needed until 2030, but if that position changes, so will mine. In answer to the second question, I request that the California Public Utilities Commission consider the very careful CPUC is charged with ensuring reliable utility services at reasonable rates. Can Diablo's energy be delivered at reasonable cost to another stressed California taxpayer, ratepayer? If not, we need to rethink the plant's immediate future. The Tribune on July 23 stated this. "All negotiations are a give-and-take," said Senator Laird. He and other lawmakers said they expect to see more informational hearings on the subject to get more information from PG&E. I have two questions to ask. One, would you, City Council, ask Assemblyman Member Addis and State Senator Laird how quickly and where the informational hearings will be held? And two, would the City Council offer them the Morro Bay Community Center as a public venue so we might attend? Thank you.
My name is Betty Winholz. I want to speak to an event that happened at my little neighborhood park this week at Monty Young. But first of all, I want to read to you what used to be the mission statement of Morro Bay. "The City of Morro Bay is dedicated to the preservation and enhancement of our quality of life and strives to provide a level of municipal service and safety consistent with the responsive needs of the public." So it's my quality of life and my needs that I expect y'all to deal with. And unfortunately, about eight years ago, when we rewrote our document, we no longer have a mission statement. We now have a vision statement that's five paragraphs long and doesn't address my quality of life. And I think that's probably why I have issues sometimes with the city, because I still revert to the old mission statement. So with what regard happened at my little Monty Young Park in my neighborhood this past week is that the city hired someone to, I assume what should have been just pruning, but actually became something more severe, if I could change the picture. This is what happened. These are Monterey cypress. They are the city trees. You never see a Monterey cypress look like this. You won't see it through Caltrans. You won't see it in California State Parks because you do not do this to cypress. It stresses them. As you can see, they kind of left the green at the top. If you go to the National Arbor Standards, which the city claims to follow, and it's in our urban forest plan, you leave the green at the bottom two-thirds, and you thin closer to the top, never topping. Fortunately, they did not top. Cutter, who was doing this, said, "Oh, these trees will pop back." That's not the nature of cypress. They will not pop back. That night, and every night since then, there have been no songbirds in this park. Nobody will be nesting in these trees anymore. So I'm really hoping that this does not continue into our other city parks, that it stops here, that this is not the way one deals with our vegetation, that we're a tree city, that we're a bird city, and we can't have birds nesting if we don't have trees that provide habitat. And across from this, which happened today, so I don't have a picture of it, there are some tree bushes, like the myoporum-type things, that were blocking or giving some visual barrier between the residential house and this park. They also were just stripped up, so that property has no privacy anymore. So I'm asking that, whether this goes to Rec. and Parks Commission, or how that's handled, that my quality of life has been impacted, as has my neighborhood, and I'm asking that it be corrected and not spread.
Anyone, excuse me, anyone else for public comment? AGP, is there any raised hands in the queue?
Mayor Wixson, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will bring it back to council. I will close public comment, and I will just have one question. And I see him turning his microphone on already because that was pretty horrific-looking.
Thank you, Mayor, and I do appreciate constituent Winholz's comments. We did receive an email also describing the situation, and it's something that the Maintenance Division Manager and I are looking into.
Thank you, and hopefully you can report back through P-Web or via email and let us know. I would be concerned if that was to continue throughout the city. We have two, one public hearing item, one business item. I'd like to take a five-minute break, and we will resume with our public hearing item. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We'd like to resume the meeting. Thank you, and I did miss an item, so we won't quite be going to our public hearing yet. We have our consent agenda. With that, I will open public comment on the consent agenda. Anyone for public comment on the consent agenda? AGP, do we have any raised hands in the queue?
No, Mayor Wixson, we have no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. If there's no public comment on the consent agenda, going, going, gone? I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Does anyone want to pull any items? 7A through 7D. Nope, seen none. I will ask for a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, and a second, please.
All second.
Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Thank you. Now, we will move on to item 8A, and I believe this is going to Mr. Singwall.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Erroln Singwall, Community Development Director. This item is a major amendment to CUP 22-09 for the libertine redevelopment project at 801 in Barcadaro. The purpose of the major amendment is to modify the city's conditional use permit conditions for the project to be consistent with the coastal commission's coastal development permit conditions of approval for the project. And in particular, there is one condition between the city's CUP and coastal commission's CDP that conflicts, and that condition relates to the required public plaza west of Barcadaro, where there's currently a parking lot. Very briefly, the proposed project involves demolishing the majority of a 4,700-square-foot two-story building with a basement, and constructing a new 5,200-square-foot mixed-use building with a restaurant and coffee shop on the first floor, expansion of the libertine brewing business in the basement, and a seven-unit hotel on the second floor with a public viewing deck. The project includes public benefits, such as a 15-foot-wide harbor walk-gap extension, a new public dock on the second-floor public viewing deck. And as required by the city's general plan and local coastal plan, the applicant proposed to redevelop the 11 parking spaces west of Barcadaro with a public plaza. So because this project is located on the Barcadaro, Thailand's area requires a conditional use permit from the city council, as well as a coastal development permit directly from the California Coastal Commission. The city council approved the CUP on January 23, 2024, with condition of approval number 25 of that original approval resolution, and that condition allowed deferral of the proposed public plaza until a parking relocation plan is prepared. And that condition stated that the plaza must be constructed within 24 months of the approved relocation plan, then within 14 months after building permit issuance, if a relocation plan hasn't been established, then the applicant has the option to pay an in-lug fee to the city for future construction of a public plaza. The coastal commission heard the CDP on June 13, 2024, and added special condition 1F, which required construction of the public plaza prior to occupancy of the hotel unit. So essentially, that supersedes and prevails over the city council CUP condition that allows for deferral of the plaza, and it requires the plaza to be constructed prior to occupancy of the hotel. Coastal Commission also added special condition 1E, which is consistent with the CUP conditions. That condition requires an ADA space and a 10-minute passenger loading space along the frontage of the property on Barcadaro at the curb. It's really important to note here that, as is really always the case with a CDP when there's a city CUP, the CDP specifically states that in the event of a conflict between the city's conditional use permit and the coastal commission's coastal development permit conditions, the coastal commission's CDP conditions will prevail. And again, the purpose of this item is a major amendment to essentially delete that plaza deferral condition to create consistency between the city's CUP and coastal commission's So on the screen here is the city condition of approval. It was originally condition approval number 26, that also required the ADA parking space and the passenger loading zone to be retained and provided on the curb, on the property frontage. And that is consistent with a very similar condition added by coastal commission, that special condition 1E, which essentially requires the same thing. With that, staff recommends the council adopt Resolution 5324 to approve a major revision to remove the city council added condition to defer public plaza improvements and require the proposed public plaza be added prior to final occupancy, consistent with the coastal commission's conditions placed on the CDP. It is, I think, important to point out that, you know, if the council declines to adopt the resolution, as I explained earlier, the coastal commission, CDP specifically states that if there's a conflict with a city CUP condition, coastal's condition prevails. So if the council were to decline to adopt the resolution, the applicant would still have a CUP from the city, they would have a CDP from coastal commission, and that conflict regarding the plaza, the coastal commission condition would prevail, and the applicant could proceed. So in a way, this is an informational item for the council, as either way, the applicant has an ability under the CUP and CDP to proceed with the project. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Singwall. I see the applicants here, and we'll invite them up in a couple minutes, but I want to start with questions up here first. Councilmember Ford, any questions?
I don't have any at this time. I appreciated the staff's willingness to meet with us beforehand, to let us ask all of our questions, and to kind of give us a broad overview of what we're looking at here and why we're here tonight. So, no.
Councilmember Edwards, questions?
Yeah, I just want to echo Councilmember Ford's comment, and I'll save comment till later.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton, questions?
No questions. I certainly appreciated the way this was all spelled out so carefully, it was made for helpful to understand it.
Thank you. Mayor Protim?
I'm curious. I didn't ask this question, but I just thought of it. Is in, well, first of all, can I look at the first photograph that you, do you mind showing me that again? It was early on.
I just wanted to keep going.
Was there a closer up one of that? Or was that it?
There's actually, I think, at the end of the presentation, there's this one.
No, it was the, I think it was the first one, but I had my glasses on. Oh, thank you. And then, so my question is, thank you. Is there a landscape plan for this? Because I noticed that there's greenery in the, that outdoor area.
So perhaps during public comment, I could take a look at the, I have the plan set here. I'll take a look to see if we have a landscape plan.
That's fine. Sorry, I just thought of it when I saw the picture, so.
I believe when I attended the planning commission hearing, there is included a landscape plan with this. I have a question, then. Basically, we're being told by the coastal commission that the project's changed back to what it was before, and so, I mean, it's kind of a mute point. But in our conversations we had meeting with you ahead of time on your staff, there was a discussion about, is there the ability to change the material of the plaza? Because the concern was, when council originally took this up and asked for the deferral, was because we were not interested in DG being the product that was there. What would it look like to, or is there any ability somewhere in this process to go back and change that so that we can address the permanence of the plaza versus DG? And I say that because for 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, we've heard complaints about the dirt lot across the street. So it just kind of seems like we're going to do the same thing there.
So the project plans do identify the plaza as being stabilized, decomposed granite. To your question, as far as, you know, process, if the council and applicant were able to reach some type of agreement on a different hardscape material, I did have a very brief conversation with our coastal planner at coastal commission, and she said that there is an administrative process for very minor amendments, such as changing a hardscape material for a CDP. So there is a potential process where that could be approved administratively by coastal commission without having coastal commission staff, without having to go back to the coastal commission.
Thank you. I mean, the final goal is for it to be hardscape at some point, so the deferral that we looked at was to wait until that. Now, with the change of going back to the DG, I would be more inclined to want to look at a hardscape material. And is that something we will be able to address tonight or not? Or is that something we address during the lease process? I'm not sure where or how we would.
So my thought on it is, it is a little challenging, because really, the focus of this item is just that major amendment to, you know, to consider deleting the condition and be consistent with coastal commission condition. I think if, you know, the applicant were amenable to changing the hardscape material, and that's the council's desire, again, it sounds like there's a process for coastal commission to approve that at the staff level. I think that's something that could be agreed to, but at this point, I think it would require the applicant to, you know, basically state, you know, concurrence with that.
During this process tonight? Otherwise, we would have to address it during the lease process?
Correct.
As an opportunity? Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I'll, you have another question? Sure.
I just thought I would ask, we talked about this, but I just wanted to clarify again, that if, in the lease process, there is, like, there is no agreement on the lease, the applicant and the council don't agree on a lease, then would the process, could you explain the process at that point?
Because I haven't been involved in the lease negotiations on this, I may look to the manager or city attorney.
Maybe Mr. Newmeyer could help out?
So you're wondering what happens to the use permit if we don't enter into a new lease? I'd have to look back on the file on the terms that are left, but if we don't extend the lease, and right now, we're not obligated to do so in any shape or form, then the project wouldn't be able to continue.
So that use permit is, I mean, would it, how, what happens to that?
Use permits run with the land, so that use permit remains.
But we, but the plans don't run with the land. The plans run with the property, or the applicant. So the plans are, go with the use permit, so?
Well, the...
Someone would have to start all over again?
Well, no. I mean, there's been an authority granted by the coastal commission and the council for this project to proceed. If whoever has title, whoever's on that land, like, if they have that use permit, they can use it. But I'd have to take a look at the intersection between the lease and these permits right now. I haven't reviewed that for tonight's meeting.
So you're saying we have to agree to whatever?
No.
So I'm confused. Could you?
No. I would need to take a look at the lease and the use permit. I did not review the terms of the lease or the timeframe for tonight's meeting, but I could take a look at that and get back to you on that one.
Well, I don't think there is a lease, right? I mean, isn't that what we have to approve? Right. I'm just wondering, like, theoretically, in the future, if for some reason there's no agreement by both parties, what happens in that case?
Well, in that case, the holder of the use permit would, they wouldn't have access to the land.
Right. So in order to go forward on that property, someone, like, it would go back to an RFP, and someone else would get another use permit, is, that's what I'm asking.
I would need to take a look at, right now, what the current arrangement is for their use of the site. Again, I haven't looked at what their current title is to the site. I haven't looked at, you know, their potential use of the site, other than they have the use permits. I mean, they have these permits, but I would have to take a look at the file again, take a look at that. But, I mean, bottom line, if somebody doesn't have a lease, but they have a use permit, then they're not going to be able to do a project.
Okay. I was just curious. This is the first one we've dealt with, and I was just curious.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, this is a public hearing item, and I think I saw the applicant just walk out, and I'm not sure if they're coming back. Pardon?
That was a sterile wind.
Oh, he's back there. I'm sorry. I was looking over there. Sorry. I'd like to invite you up if you'd like to have three minutes, whatever you need. If you need more, let me know. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Again, my name's Eric Newton. I'm representing the developer, or the development team on this project. First, I want to thank city staff, not only for their work throughout this whole process the last few years here, but in assistance with dealing with the coastal commission through their process, too. I feel that our collaborative effort, we have maximized the potential of the property, both aesthetic and program requirements. One final item was that, was tabled from the last meeting, was the parking versus the plaza area. Why, I understand that parking is really important, it's a concern to the, to the city and the public here. It's just, I ask that the council really weigh the benefits of the plaza area, and at the, at this specific location. It's just throughout my dealings with the coastal commission, it's become completely obvious that the benefits of a public plaza area outweigh that of the loss of parking here. I ask that the council support the development of the plaza area. The last few months, my design team has, has really made a significant progress with the design. We're about 30 days of submitting for our construction plans, and this piece right here is the last, last piece of the puzzle in order to finalize those documents. There was some comments regarding the DG and why was that was chosen. This was, goes back to the previous planners. We wanted an application that gave the city and ourselves the ability to modify the program requirements, doing events or doing a tent there. So that stabilized DG gave everybody the opportunity to do different, different things, specifically us adding utilities in those areas to modify those as time, time moved on, as, I guess, the development of the plaza area moved on, too. So different things can be done there. And other than that, if you guys have any questions, I'm here for you when it comes time.
Thank you, Mr. Newton. Council questions? I'll open the public hearing. Public comment for the public hearing? Thank you.
Thank you, Betty Winholz. Thank you for the question about the DG. This was the thing that came up at the planning commission, and the public was, may I say, disappointed that the commission agreed to go with the DG. We think it's very rough and, you know, not pretty. Like, even in the picture, it was smooth, and they had made it look nice. And so I hope, I don't know what these plans will be, coming back, I'm assuming he's going to come back with the DG, but I hope that at some point, you can make them go to a hard surface. I only had two asks for this project, and it really had nothing to do with the project, but it was in the language of your resolution. One was on page 36, one was on page 37, both of which address commercial fishing. This is not a commercial fishing area. It's a commercial visitor-serving area, and even though it's from the waterfront master plan, it identifies the different districts there. And I just thought that the removal of this language would make your resolution more true, more accurate, to delete the language while increasing and maintaining commercial fishing industry. This project has nothing to do with increasing or maintaining fishing. And then the second one was on page 37, to delete the words "the working fishing village" character. Again, this area does not look like that at all, and I just thought it would make your resolution ring more true if you did the other. And I just thought it would make your resolution ring more true if you did the other. I did, at the bottom of my letter to you, ask that you consider what public benefits really are. And I know that the Planning Commission is supposedly dealing with this at some point, and they haven't yet. But, and this was one of the reasons in this project that they were allowed to go from 17 to 25 feet, which I think is a violation, because I don't believe they meet any public benefits. And I explained those on here, that expanding from 10 to 15 feet doesn't give a public benefit. It only allows the developer to add more tables. A second-floor viewing deck is not useful. People don't climb stairs, particularly at 72. You're going to stay on the boardwalk and look at the water. Nobody, I mean, even if you go down to the landing on the far end of the Embarcadero, you'll see very few people going upstairs just to look out. They stay down below. What is the benefit of a public access to a dock, other than to go fishing? I don't think you'll find very many of that, much fishing from the docks. They tend to go out on the boardwalk, harbor walk. And then preserving parking, which has now become a moot point, is no longer a value. In fact, we're losing two parking places, or at least one, on the street because of the loading and unloading. So, and then cumulative impacts, the mass and scale, as you continue to evaluate and do projects on the Embarcadero, please be cognizant of not creating a wall, because that's what's happening in this block. Thanks.
Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue?
No, Mayor Wickson. There are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Any other questions at this point?
Yeah, my question is for Mr. Newton. I, I'm wondering, in the previous discussion with regard to the DG, I want to say there was a comment made to have it be a type of material that could be changed at a time because of some of the things that you wanted to do for public benefit. I'm, I'm not sure. I'm, I'm just remembering some conversation with regard to a stage and some other types of entertainment forums, and I'm just wondering if, if that was some of the reason left behind using DG and why you would not go just right here and now with a hardscape?
I, I think there's a, a little bit misconception what DG is. It's, DG is, can be compacted with a stabilizer down to hard service, but then it also gives you the opportunity to dig it up, make, make some modifications, maybe put in some tent poles, and, and then, and then patch it back and put that hard, put the hardener back on it. So you have ability to go ahead in so many different ways on what to do there. The, the past Planning Commission, we all agreed that this was the best direction of this project, especially, you know, where you didn't really know the program requirements and, and what you could do, do there. And it, it was just basically after a few years of exploration on how this, how this area go ahead and morphs into what it, what it could be on, on, and then, over the years, figuring out what is the best substrate to use. So at the time, this was the appropriate direction.
I want to ask a follow-up question to that. So the, the talk about over time and what it progresses to, and eventually hardscape, who would be responsible for putting in the hardscape at that point in time? Would that be the city? We would be in charge of that, right?
That was my conversations, yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. And, and I think we, with all due respect, I think we understand DG. My husband was a concrete contractor and, and owned the concrete plant for about 40 years, so. Our, our concerns, I think, when we originally addressed this was about the idea of it being DG versus a permanent hardscape. And I think that I went down there specifically last week to look at how nice the plaza is next to Rosa's Landing that they were required to put in with public access and, and tables and chairs, and how it flows into the Van Bearden project. And there's just some consistency and continuity in it. And on the other side, and I go back again to the idea that for years, the Hartzells have had a empty lot across the street that, you know, has been so extreme that people are like, why aren't you doing something about that DG? No matter how stabilized and compacted it is, when we get the floods and the rains like we've had, is going to track and, and move. As far as putting up event tents and things, there's plenty of ways to stabilize and put in attachments for those to be used for that public plaza. So I, I think for me, you know, we're back to where there's really no opportunity because the Coastal Commission's made their ruling. I agree with Ms. Winholtz about the verbiage. The parking credits were given from a sport boat that unloaded there probably 40 years ago, and we just haven't addressed making those changes. So I appreciate that there'll still be a loading and unloading. I hope the city does a better job monitoring that, because I think it's being abused already by some other businesses down there that are keeping that area specific for their use and for their, their guests, and not allowing access to others. So I hope we do a better job monitoring that. And I will, for me personally, definitely be looking at the opportunities during our lease negotiations with you, Mr. Newton, to address putting in some sort of hardscape, what that might look like. I'm not sure, but that's my comments for now, and I'll go to my left.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to comment on that, and thank you for your response, Mr. Newton. I think, I think to the mayor's point, you know, part of this that I did not get an opportunity to speak to at the, the last time that this came before us, and that led to why we are here now, it, it, you know, we keep running into the fact that we have not had the greater conversation and discussion on our waterfront master plan, and not having a parking analysis that I am quite sure we might get to with that, and trying to learn as to where parking will be moved, which direction a road will go, and numerous other details that would happen during that planning. Another part of this for me, being, you know, involved in conversations since 2015, 2016, is with regard to the DWSP, which I spoke to, spoke about earlier, is the fact of that connectivity from, you know, downtown to the water. I took a moment the other day, which I'm glad to hear your, your viewpoint, Mayor. I, I went down onto the property, and I took a picture toward the Centennial Stairwell. Then I went up, and from the Centennial Stairwell, I took a picture. I walked all the way back to Morro Bay Boulevard in Maine, and from the north side of the street, you could still see where your building's going to be and that plaza area. So for me, it was something like, this is a very big visual thing that people coming from up top are going to see, and the people going from your place and looking up to Centennial area, to 781 Market and to Dorns, that I was just concerned visually, and, because this is something that's going to stick. I mean, we're green is something, this project right now, not being completely, completely sure at what everything else is going to look like holistically. So I just wanted to give a little bit feedback as to why I responded the way that I did, made the decision that I did on the last go. And so I agree with the mayor on this. We don't really have a choice. The Coastal Commission has kind of said what they've said. And my hope would be that we could have a little bit more discussion about that as well.
Councilmember Ford?
My comments are just that I'm, I'm excited to see this project move forward and, you know, eventually see something, you know, elevated, as, as Councilmember Edwards said, the view from many angles will be great. And I'm looking forward to eventually that plaza, you know, coming to its full, you know, what, the essence that it could have there. And, and so I, yeah, I'll be, I mean, I know that there's really, this is an informational piece, but I also agree with what the mayor has said, and looking at that surface, I know that's a conversation for another day, but also taking into consideration that, that space could possibly slightly change in the future, depending on how that whole downtown area with the waterfront master plan and how that's, how that may end up, whether there's parking one direction, no parking, stays as is. But all of that is to be determined. But at this point in time, yeah, I'm glad that this, we got a chance to talk about this again, because I think it's really an important project for the city. And that's pretty much my comments for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton?
I appreciate that we have gotten to look at this again. I can't remember how long it's been, but the pictures are, you know, we've looked at those several times over the last couple of years, I think. And it's, it's exciting to look at it and think that it, that we're getting close. So, yeah, I, I'm with you guys on all your comments.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Landrum?
I, I just think it's really important that we, we clarify what the community benefits are. For me, the view of the bay and the rock are the money view to me. It's not a building. It's not a wall of buildings. And I think we're, we're close to creating that if we don't clarify our, what our design concept is for the, that area. It's enticing to think of putting in hotels for the TOT, but at what cost? Like, all, at, at the end of the day, I'm just kind of riffing, but it's, it's like, what is the cost to our tourism? And, you know, it might bring in quick, fast money, but what does that do for us in the, in the long run? And I really think we need to clarify and define loading and unloading, and, and maybe enforce that, and, and possibly enfor, and I'm probably not ever going to be for paid parking, but I think we should maybe look at enforcing hotel guests not parking in their designated areas and possibly parking on the streets, on the Embarcadero, and what, you know, I think that should be enforced, and maybe enforced through the property owner. Yeah, those are just my thoughts on that.
Thank you. And I, I think that that's kind of the consensus up here, is that there's many more conversations to be had. And, you know, I appreciate, Mr. Newton, your time invested in this, and the jobs, and the sales tax, and, and the uplift to it. I think, you know, as you, you're hearing us, and you've heard us before, our, we're going to keep circling back to this product for this plaza. I hope you're hearing what we're saying, and that we can find some middle ground here for some opportunities, especially in light of what Mr. Singwell said, with the Coastal Commission being willing to make a minor change. I know from looking at the cost, certainly the DG's less expensive, but I also know from looking at the cost, after I walked the site, measured it, and talked to contractors, it, it's not a whole lot more to make some other changes and some other options. So I, I really hope you consider that and work on an opportunity for us to, to get behind that. With that being said, and, and I would remind you, too, as you well know, there was a lot of gives to this project as far as community benefits, and the initial, because I have followed this project all the way as the liaison for the Planning Commission, as many other people have, was that you were going to keep part of that property and rebuild until you decided to tear it all down, and the, the city of Morro Bay, the public is giving you part of their property for your project. So zero setbacks and parking spots out of there, that'll be part of your project. So with that, I'll make a motion to, and before I do that, hang on one second. Mr. Newmeyer, is there anything we need to do? I agree with Ms. Winholtz about deleting page 36 of 159D while increasing and maintaining commercial fishing industry, removing that. Is there any change to anything to remove that in this motion?
So tonight's public hearing is pretty limited to just simply acknowledging essentially the Coastal Commission's
Period.
override.
Okay.
And we've only brought to the council an approval of this major condition change.
Fine.
So I don't think that we've agendized anything else.
That's fine. And do we need to read this in its entirety, or can I just make a motion to adopt?
You can just make a motion because it's a resolution.
Perfect. Perfect. Well, move approval to adopt resolution number 5324, and ask for a second.
A second.
I'll ask for a voice vote, please.
Aye.
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 Okay. Thank you. Five-oh, thank you. Moving on to our next item. Oops, let me get back to my major, next page, and turning it over to Mr. Qualick.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council and members of the public, Greg Qualick, Public Works Director. And tonight's item, our only business item, is hydrogeological design and support services for the recycled water and extraction wells project. And I'll ask Dan Heimel of Confluence Engineering to come up. He's going to take part of this presentation. I'm going to kick it off briefly, and if you can go to the next, oh, wait, I have the, thank you. This slide here gives a little bit of the history for recycled water. Back in November, if we can imagine, that was like nine months ago now, we had a joint meeting with the City Council and the Public Works Advisory Board, and staff and Confluence Engineering proposed our phased approach to the recycled water project, which emphasized the goal of only implementing the minimum requirements for recycled water to satisfy the regulatory and funding and financing requirements that are put upon us. And the City Council asked some good questions and asked us to reach out to our one financing agency that was a bit more restrictive, and make sure that we knew what those minimum requirements really were. And so we sent a letter to the state, to the State Revolving Fund Loan Program at the State Water Resources Control Board, and it took them a few months to get back to us, and they did confirm our minimum requirements, and they aligned with what staff had proposed in November. And so we brought that confirmation back to the City Council in March. And what that meant is, we started to put together contracts to implement the recycled water program. And in June, specifically on June 11th, we brought to council a few contracts, and tonight, we are bringing one more. Now, when we did this, we took the opportunity during two of the RFPs to double up for efficiency's sake. So when we did the design contract for recycled water, we also added in there, into that RFP, design services for our extraction well project. And that way, we don't have to do two separate RFPs. It's the same firms that are proposing on these kinds of projects. And so we wound up awarding to Cannon Engineering out of San Luis Obispo, an agreement for recycled water design, and then also an agreement for extraction well design. Two separate projects, one RFP, one consultant, much more efficient, save time and money. And we did the same thing for the hydrogeological design and support services. When we did the RFP, we did it for recycled water, and we also did it for the extraction wells. And I know that there's some questions about, you know, why are we doing design with, for, for Cannon, and then design support, hydrogeological design support for GSI? Are we, are we doing duplicative things? And, you know, the short answer is no. And I'll just speak at a high level about it, and Dan's going to go into a bit more detail, but the, all the facilities that are above ground that have to be designed, including electrical controls, the SCADA system, the piping, the conveyance pipes to the injection wells, are designed by an engineer. And the design support services that are the discussion point for tonight are hydrogeological in nature, and they require a geologist, not, not an engineer. And so those are the downhole design support services about where to put various components of a well. And Mr. Heimel's going to go through a, a bit on what the difference between those two services are. two services are in more detail. I'd also like to thank Councilmember Landrum who suggested that maybe some sort of org chart would help us parse this out. It provides a nice visual because we have a few different things going on and it can get confusing. And so, we do have the next slide for that. But before I kick it to Dan, just want to pat our backs for a second and share with the City Council that the Public Works Department and the City Attorney's Office collaborated. We, we've been having some challenges with the time it takes to put together contracts and we decided to figure this thing out. And you'll notice tonight that the two contracts that are attached to the staff report already have signatures from the city attorney. And that's the first since I've been here. I, I don't know maybe if they've done that for other departments. But we made a commitment that we were going to figure out these contracts before we bring them to council so that as soon as council approves them, we can go ahead and get them signed. And that took some staff hours from Ms. Cindy Cecil, who's our city engineer, who's sitting in the back of the room now, as well as from Assistant City Attorney Lana Lehman. And that process taught us a lot. And you can expect that future design and construction contracts that come to the City Council for approval will follow that same streamlined process and will, will cut out many weeks of, of just additional process. So, I, I want to thank the City Attorney's Office for collaborating with Public Works on that. And with that said, we can go to the next slide and I'll kick it over to Mr. Heimel.
Thanks, Greg, Mayor, members of the City Council. Yeah, what we're showing you here is a, an org chart slide to help try to explain the different roles and responsibilities amongst the, the diverse and, you know, in some ways a, a large consultant team that the city has assembled to deliver the recycled water component of the WORF program. And, and this is common when you have these large public works projects and environmentally and, and other sensitive areas, that you do need a, a larger team of specialized experts to provide their pieces of the puzzle to allow the, the team as a whole and the city to move the project forward. And so, just look at the org chart, Confluence Engineering Solutions is the program manager for the recycled water component. We're overseeing the activities of each of the individual technical team members. I don't need to go in all of them in detail, but really want to focus on the two design team members in Cannon and GSI. And Greg did a good job explaining what their, each of their focuses are, and I have a slide after this to go over that in more detail. So, next slide. And then we highlighted those two firms, yes. So, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about what it takes to design and construct a well. And as, as Greg described, even a well is a multi-disciplinary activity. You need geologists, hydrogeologists to design what we're just going to call the downhole components of the well, the parts of the well that are under the ground. And then you need engineering consultants to help design the above-ground appurtenances or what we call well equipping. That's the foundations, the mechanical piping, the valving, the controls, the electronics. And so, just briefly, you know, the hydrogeologists, they analyze what they know about the basin materials, the aquifer, and that's what we're showing on the far left. They develop a conceptual design for the well, and that's what we're showing to the right there. And that, that outlines how deep they think the well needs to go, how big in diameter they think the well needs to be, where they're going to put the solid components of the casing and where they're going to put the screens. And the screens are the, where the water interacts with the aquifer formation. And that's the location, the sizing of those screens, the filter pack that goes around those screens are all critical components to having a successful well that is able to effectively inject water into the basin, in the case of an injection well, or pull water out of the basin, in the case of an extraction well. And so, the hydrogeologist prepares that design. The driller then comes on site. We got a picture of the drill wig here from injection well number one. The driller typically drills a test hole where they can actually collect direct physical evidence of the aqua materials at the location where the well is going to be constructed. They analyze that, they compare it to their initial conceptual design or preliminary design, they adjust it based on the physical data that they collected at that location, and then they design the full-scale well and then the driller installs that. And at the end of that process, you have basically a fancy hole in the ground. And that's what we're showing here in this picture over here. This is injection well number one. It was designed by GSI. It was drilled, they oversaw the construction. At the end of it, that's all it is. It's a hole in the ground. It's, you know, it's a very technical and specifically designed hole in the ground, but that's kind of where the, the geologist role in essence ends in the design and construction process. If we move to the next slide, we see where the engineers step in and take over. And so, what we're showing here is a couple example injection wells from Orange County. And as you can see, there's a lot more going on here than just a hole in the ground. There are multiple valves and other appurtenances, there are multiple monitoring systems, there's communication. What you can't really see is there are pumps that are in that, that well that have to be specifically designed to meet the flow and the pressure requirements that you need out of the well. And all of those components, there's back flushing, are engineering disciplines. And so, that is my attempt at explaining what the two design components are for a well. And you can sometimes hire one consultant that has a sub consultant to do this under one contract, or you can do it under two separate contracts. And that was the approach that the city chose to take with these wells.
Thank you, Mr. Heimel. And I'll, I'll jump in after that and expand on that point a little bit. It was a conscious decision by the city to have two different RFPs for this. As Mr. Heimel said, we could have just done one RFP, let's say Cannon won it, and they could have found their own sub and, for, for hydrogeo. We decided not to do that really for two main reasons. One, whenever you're hiring a consultant or a contractor to have subs, you're getting charged markup for that sub. So, we save a little bit of money on that markup if we have a direct contract with them, which is, again, what we're doing. The other piece of it is it allows the city to choose the best qualified hydrogeologic consultant. So, in this case, we, we wanted to be in control of who the hydrogeo expert would be. And that's for a variety of reasons, but we didn't want our consultant picking that, that group for us. So, I'm just going to stop there quickly because I know there were several questions before the council meeting surrounding, you know, how, why are there two design-related contracts and, you know, how, how did that work? So, are there any questions from the City Council on that or on the org chart?
Questions?
I have one question from Mr. Heimel. When you were talking about the drilling and they'll, after they drill, the, they're able to tell, like, if there needs to be adjustments or essentially when they drill, they see what truly is in that specific spot. Has there, since this is not something I do for a living, and you do, is there, is there ever a time where they, they do the actual drilling and they're like, yeah, this is not what we thought it would be? And this is with all of the tests that we did before and all of the, you know, we need to move it somewhere else? And if that has happened, like, what are we talking about as far as cost goes if we have to move it in different spot?
Yeah, great question, Councilmember Ford. I am aware, and I think that it happens more than just the one example that I'm aware, but I, I believe the Los Osos Community Services District was looking to drill a well over by, and many of you are probably familiar with this, the, the parking lot by the soccer field. And they drilled the test hole and that location turned out to be not a viable location for the well. And they then had to abandon that test hole and ultimately ended up constructing a well at the corner of Bay Oaks and South Bay, if you're familiar with that area. And that was a successful location. And so, yeah, there, there is a potential, some cost if it, it is not a viable location. And, you know, it's not the full cost of the well because you, you only have to drill a test hole, you don't have to drill the full hole, and you didn't install the stainless steel in the casing. But yeah, there is that risk any time that you're drilling a well. I think, and we can get to it a little bit here, the city's in a really unique position with some of the testing that it has done to actually have physical aquifer materials for all of the locations that are envisioned as potential injection well sites for the project. So, that risk has been mitigated in this project because of some unique circumstances. And I'll just jump into it while we're here. So, the city, as part of the programmatic agreement with the EPA and SHIPPO, State Historic Preservation Office had to do archaeological testing at each of the injection well sites. Yeah, here we go, we have a slide to talk to this. And along the recycled water pipeline alignments. That archaeological testing was required to go to a depth of 50 feet to test for potential archaeological resources. Upon realizing that, the program team investigated opportunities to why not go to the full depth of the basin at those locations as part of that testing, which is, you know, only 100 feet in some locations. So, it really wasn't that much further. There was already a drill rig mobilized and so, the city was able to actually drill to bedrock at each of the eight locations and collect that physical data so that that can then go into the design and the selection of the initial wells that will be part of the recycled water program.
And I had a picture of some of those results that isn't coming up for some reason, I apologize.
Well, I'm sorry, I feel like I may do have, like, jump forward into the presentation, but I appreciate that explanation, Mr. Heimel. I don't have any other questions.
Councilmember Ford's any questions at this point?
No questions.
Thank you for the work chart and the organizational chart and, and the, I appreciate the diagram showing the wells and all of that, too. It's actually fascinating. I'm curious, and I, I will add that it's beyond a, a hole in the ground, it's an expensive hole in the ground. How, so on the work chart, the, the city is at the top, and who at the city is responsible for the city?
So, right above the program manager is myself and Damaris Hansen and the city engineer, depending on the task and the issue. So, Damaris Hansen, the Utilities Division Manager, is very involved because she oversees the operations of the utilities. And in many cases, we're able to use some of the guys in the utility shop to help out. And then the city engineer, obviously is a city engineer and as she's been, she's somewhat new to the city, I think it's been three months, maybe four months already? Four, okay. So, she's, she's getting up to speed and this is obviously a, a, a critical project and so, she's, she was involved in these contracts as well as in the RFP. And then myself, I'm, I'm kind of generally overseeing the program. Then I report to the city manager and city manager reports to the city council.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to know, do we have a site yet? Like, is, it looks like we do, but I'm not, no, no?
A site?
Like, to do, to do these well? This, well, we're really only doing one well, right? We're redoing wells. I assume you, when you redo them, you do them in the same spot? Maybe you don't?
So, if we're talking about the extraction wells, which is different from recycled water, then we, we're looking to replace one well. And, and again, so we kind of, this is where it gets a little tricky because we have two contracts. We have one for recycled water with GSI for hydrogeological services and then one for the extraction well project. If we're moving to the extraction well, that's not what we did the archaeological for. We, we still have to find a site for, for that replacement well, if we need a replacement well at all. But for recycled water, we did borings at, was it eight sites?
Actually, seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
So, we, we already have seven potential sites.
Okay. And we're rehabbing some wells in this?
That is for the extraction well project.
Okay. And I'm curious, like, how old those wells were?
We have some in the 50 to 60-year-old range.
Okay, so, so you would assume that the new ones will last that long?
Depending on the materials that we use, at, at least that long, yeah.
Okay. And do, when you replace them, do you replace them in the same spot or do you replace them somewhere else?
I'll, I'll let Mr. Heimel speak to that. I mean, I can answer on the fly, but you have more of the technical expertise.
Yeah. You typically, and not being a hydrogeologist, but I think I've had enough experience with these types of projects that you typically can't replace them in the same spot. You do need to move off a certain amount of distance to get away from the impact that that well has had during its construction and operation. So, there may be ways to replace in the same spot in some situations, but what I've seen typically done is you move a certain distance away, but you're not seeing the interference of that well on the new well.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
Mayor, can I continue? Thank you. And, and again, just at the bottom of this slide, there's reference to that we used one RFP for two separate projects, two separate contracts, and that is to reduce the procurement level of effort, to save time, in other words, reduce the costs and, oh, that's it. And so, it, it worked out in this case for us. So, we did release the RFP on May 6th and we received two proposals from, one from GSI and one from NGO. The review process of those proposals was Confluence, Damaris Hansen, the Utilities Division Manager and Cindy Cecil, the city engineer. And the recommended consultant unanimously was GSI Water Solutions. They are local, they have a local office here, actually in Morro Bay. They're very qualified and they've been working on this project and projects in the Morro Basin, so there's very little onboarding. So, so two, two agreements. One is the agreement for hydrogeological design and support services for the injection and monitoring wells, that's, that's recycled water. The base fee was $448,000 and we built into the contract a 10% contingency executable by the city manager. And then the second contract is the potable water extraction well design. Again, that's the Morro Basin wellfield rehab project. Again, hydrogeological design and support services, but this time for potable extraction wells. And that is separate from recycled water project, base fee 167,000 with a 10% contingency, built into the contract, executable by the city manager. And we will take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Qualick. Any other questions right now from council? No? Thank you, Mr. Heimel with that. I'm going to move to public comment.
I appreciate the information about, explaining how GSI and Cannon are not doing the same job, ones above the ground kind of and ones below. I still do have two other questions and I'll just read what I sent to the council. When asked, the city has been directed to deliver the 412.5 acre feet within five years. And how does this information conclude that three wells are justified and what is that evidence? So, if we could just understand that, given us a lot of information tonight. And then number two, to rehab the city's six wells, that was really interesting to hear that they're not going to reuse the six old ones. So, that makes me wonder how much more territory we're going to need because I heard that it had, old well had to be a certain distance from a new well. So, do we need more area and, and do we have that area? And does that mean we're going to have to get some area from someone that, from land that's not part of city land? So, I'd, I'd like to know more about that. And then I, I really don't understand, and this has been an emphasis this evening, the difference between recycling wells and extraction wells. So, when we're extracting water, isn't that for us to recycle that water so we can drink or use it? So, if you could clarify those three things, thanks.
Bill Lefay here. I just have one quick question that could be answered. This particular contract that you're looking at tonight, is that actually getting the work done or is that just consulting fees? And, and done, or is that just consulting fees and engineering? That's my main question.
Good evening, council. So I know these are, these are about amendments tonight. In June, you had also amendments for GSI. So I was just kind of curious, too. The question is, why did we have an amendment in June, and now, two months later, we have more amendments? Amendments equals dollars, and that is my concern. Is this an engineering project? Yes. So I would like to know why our current city engineer doesn't get CC'd, and I know that she's involved, that's not the point, but as a citizen looking at agendas, other people are CC'd on the agenda items, but we have a city engineer. She's in-house. There are things she has to sign, state, I mean, stamp and date. So I'm just throwing it out there for future items. Let's see, the org chart. It was nice to see, you know, the names. I mean, we're familiar with those names because I've been up here before and spoken about them. And however, when I'm talking about an org chart, it's more like this company is responsible for this job, this project on this job, doing what, right? And then the other company is on the same spreadsheet, maybe they're on a separate spreadsheet, maybe they're linked. And so you're following what job is being done or not done yet, so we're not paying them for a job that hasn't been done until it's done. I'm not asking for a slide that shows me the names of the companies and, you know, just two little words under them, like the project engineer, or the geoengineer, or the biological, whatever they're called. So you get my drift? We're tracking money. We're tracking what the people are doing on these jobs, are we not? We're trying to keep the costs down because when Heimel first came on in 2022, his contract, Jeff Heimel's words, I mean Jeff, sorry, there's a couple Jeffs tonight. Jeff Heller said, "If I look at this contract, it looks like if in two years, we'll be paying you a couple million dollars." So he voted no against that. And I saw somewhere in one of these, at the full agenda, that it was going to be about nine million plus for this project to finish. You've got about a million and a half, I think it said in the full agenda, to pay GSI, and I didn't catch the rest of the numbers for Cannon and everybody else. When Corolla was actually supposed to finish this. Bill Mar Tony talked about, a couple of meetings ago, oh, really? How to refresh wells, just real quick, Mayor, how to refresh wells and save a lot of money. And I would like to know, where are the old, where are the reports that show the well activity?
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment on this item? AGP, are there any raised hands in the queue? AGP?
Sorry, there are no raised hands in the queue.
Thank you very much. With that, I will bring it back, close public comment, and come back to council. Mr. Qualick, I think it's, work with me here on these. I think Mr. LeFay's question was about consulting and engineering. The answer is yes, it is just consulting and engineering on these.
Yes.
Hopefully, that gave you the answer, Bill. I was giving you the head nod. Questions from Ms. Winholz about the space? Do we have space available where these new wells will go, or will this have to be something we have to buy property from someone? What does that look like?
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, I'll attempt to answer her three questions because I kind of had an order in my mind of how I was going to do that.
Thank you.
So the first one I'll answer is the difference between the extraction well and the recycled water well, I guess is what we're calling it. Really, the recycled water well is an injection well. So after the plant, the new sewer plant goes through the advanced purified water treatment, that IPR water, let's call it that, indirect potable reuse water, that water has to get injected into the groundwater basin. So the injection wells or the recycled water wells are there to put water in the ground. The extraction wells are wells that the city, we already have several of them in the ground. We've been using them for decades. That's to pull water out of the ground. And so relatedly, and to another one of constituent Winholz's questions, we're not necessarily going to be moving six extraction wells. Part of GSI's scope is to do a conditions assessment of the wells. And so depending on the conditions, some of them may have to be replaced and moved. Others may, we may just be able to rehab. So we're not necessarily putting in six new wells. We do have plans to replace at least one, and that was described in the staff report. And then there was another question about, and I'll ask Mr. Heimel to come up and answer this one, because I know we've talked about this at PWAAB and as well with the city council. How do we know that we only need two more injection wells to achieve the 412.5 acre feet per year?
Yeah, and that's a great question. So, yeah, the estimate of three total injection wells was based on some modeling, the recycled water program team that looked at, how much wastewater do we have flowing into the plant right now? When does that wastewater flow into the plant? Because it does not do it at a nice even rate all the time. It ramps up in the morning, and then mels out, and then ramps up in the evening, and then backs off in the night. How much storage do we have for the advanced purified water after we've treated it? What's the injection capacity? So it's an analysis of how we think the system will operate once the recycled water program is implemented. And then included in that analysis is an ability to toggle the number of wells that are incorporated into that system. And so based on that analysis, it was estimated that three wells would provide sufficient injection capacity to meet that targeted 412.5 acre feet per year of recycled water delivered based on the current wastewater flow rates and patterns we have here at the city.
And I will just add one piece to that, and also to get to the 412.5, we're relying on using some of the recycled water for irrigation as well.
Thank you. I was processing, that's all right. Any other questions?
I have a couple of questions. So to follow up with Mr. LeFay's question, none of these include any actual drilling?
Correct.
So is that, is that going to come to us later? Or do we already know what that is? Or?
So it's a good question. The drilling happens during the construction phase. We've already done some drilling when we did the archaeological borings. So that was some of the pictures that we had up earlier. And I just want to emphasize that this is a, somewhat of a sophisticated project that requires planning, expertise, a lot of analysis, and that's why we're hiring these consultants to do that work, so that we can get to the construction phase.
Okay. And then, could you elaborate on the GSI amendment in June? And now again, is, and then, maybe, maybe this will be helpful for this whole question. I mean, I really appreciate the chart, and I think, is it possible that we could maybe make it public somehow on the website? That maybe it's even more detailed? Like, I'm just trying to think of ways to prevent distrust and create transparency. And, you know, if we, obviously, you have to do it yourselves, and maybe if we just make that public so that people know what they're paying for and, you know, all of that. And I think that the answer of GSI's amendment now and in June would be answered on that, if something like that were public. It just is confusing to have to go back and look at meetings to get your information. So it would be really great, I think, I agree, if we could make something like that available.
Thank you for the feedback, Councilmember Landrum. That's certainly something we could explore. Maybe we put some sort of landing page on the website that explains some of this. In terms of the June 11 meeting and the GSI contract, I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, but I recall that we did award a contract amendment to GSI for hydrogeological services, but it was for the boring work that was going in. And I'm looking for a head nod from Dan, and he's agreeing. The two items that the city council is approving tonight are not amendments. They're actually new, fresh contracts. And one of the reasons we did that was because we wanted to update the terms of the contracts and also just to have kind of a fresh start with the recycled water project and also with the extraction well project.
Okay. And then, could you answer the question about the city engineer stamping and dating? Is that happening? Or?
Would the city engineer like to take a crack at that one?
I can ask my other, my last question while she's coming up. I also was curious, all of this, it just struck me, and I don't know if we've ever asked this, but how is, how is, you know, because someone tonight brought up the electricity, the cost of PG&E and things like that. And I know that in general, electricity is a big cost for the city, and I'm wondering how much, and I'm thinking of all these wells, how much is, do we know? Have we analyzed how much all of this is going to add to our electricity costs? And that's, you can think about that maybe while she's answering?
It's a good question, Councilmember Landrum, and there's a couple of angles on that. The overall answer is no, I haven't seen a forecast of how much electricity cost will go up for the city as we use the injection wells. That said, it really all depends on our operational strategies that we implement, whether we run the recycled water program full-time or not. There's going to be some years that maybe we don't run it if we have a lot of rain. Again, the program is really designed as an insurance policy for the city's water supply to extend our supply in cases of extreme drought, which we did experience just a couple of years ago. I can tell you that the electricity costs at the new plant are a lot more than they were at the old plant. That's because we have more equipment there and bigger pumps, and we have been seeing that. They're not quite as high as we thought they were going to be, but they are much higher. And I'll give it to Ms. Cecil. I'm not sure that I understood the question about city engineer stamping. I suspect there's a question about whether or not the city engineer has to stamp all of the plans as part of the project. Can you address that?
The thing that I review, and I don't stamp, but I sign, is the RFP before it goes out. That's a request for proposal from consultants and contractors. I review all of those and sign them. I wasn't sure what it was that I'm not getting that was thought that I should be getting.
I think she was questioning why your name wasn't on the staff report. That was what I heard.
Oh, okay, okay. And I think your name is on the staff report, is that true?
Let me take a look.
Yeah, we both review the staff reports, and whose name is on it is not one of my highest priorities, but.
Nor mine, and oftentimes, we're using a template, so we're copying and pasting, and sometimes we forget to put things. I see on here my name, Damaris's name, and Dan's name. I believe Dan did the first draft, and then Damaris and I reviewed and added some things. So, and I'm sure Cindy reviewed it as well. So I don't really have a comment on that.
Right, okay, so, thank you.
Done?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Cecil. I think they were just looking for clarification that the engineer was actually having oversight of these projects that are at a level that require your checkoff. So, thank you. Comments to my left?
I have a, I have one more question. I know that most of our, if not all of our facilities, for the city-owned facilities, have solar panels. Do we have solar on our wastewater resource center? I'm seeing a no over here, but, and is that something that we are looking into? If we don't?
So that's a good question, Councilmember Ford. I take the question to be, do we have solar panels at the Water Resources Center, otherwise known as the new sewer treatment plant in the WORF? We do not. My understanding was that the project costs, this is before my time, they were increasing, and there was some group of folks who got together to try to figure out how to reduce the costs, and that was one of the things that got cut out. Unfortunately, the way the, there would be opportunities to install solar up there, except the way that the carports were pitched, they're kind of facing the wrong way. And so that was kind of just cut out as part of a cost reduction process.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions, but I do appreciate all of this information. And while I was listening to this report, and all of the reports that I've had since I've been on council, I feel like I should be getting CTE credits, just saying. But anyway, I just, I appreciate the in-depth answers that we are getting and really kind of layman terms way of explaining something that I know is much more in-depth than what, you know, than the version that we get. But I appreciate it because I feel like it's digestible, it's understandable for someone who does not have that background. So, yeah, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember reports comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pretty much gonna just say the same thing, actually. Every question that I had was answered or asked by the public or somebody else up here, so I'm good.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton, comments?
I'll agree with Councilmember Ford's, talking about the, how easy it is to, well, easy is a relative term, but anyway, to understand the whole process here, and I have found in the various meetings I've been in with Mr. Heimel that that's, that holds true throughout. So, thank you.
Councilmember Landrum, comments?
No, I just, I appreciate also that your patience and answering questions and responsiveness. I really think that we should look into maybe putting something more detailed on the website somewhere. I think that would be really helpful and alleviate a lot of concerns for people, make all of our lives easier.
Thank you. I would, I would echo that, and I'm seeing some head nods down here, too, that are, I think that the more information we're able to provide during this process, the easier it will be to follow. I agree with the comments. It is difficult to follow, and we have these conversations about other projects when we talk about the, Mot McDonald's going to come in and do work for us, and we don't know who's watching what they did last time versus what they're doing this time, and it's the same with this project. So I think that if there's more clarity, I appreciate that the company is local. I've appreciated that all along, and I appreciate our staff taking time to vet that and verify the qualifications and things. For me, my biggest comment on this, and I will keep it short so we can move on, because this is another one of those things that we have a little, little option to comply with this, as it was part of what happened before we were all up here with past councils, is about the money. I mean, it's just painful. I feel like we're just hemorrhaging money, and I know this is what it costs to do things, but, you know, GSI, looking at June and now, what the amendments is, it's $2 million. And as Mr. LeFay said, we haven't even begun to actually implement the project. I mean, we're doing all the things we have to do. I get it, we all get it, but it is painful, because this is all going to be passed on to our taxpayers, to ourselves. So with that, I will ask one of my councilmembers, fellow councilmembers, to make a motion on this. Somebody?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Ah, sorry. All right. I move that we, let's see here, that we authorize the city manager to execute, just read, just read that off, okay. An agreement with GSI-
manager to execute, and just read, just read that off. Okay. An agreement with GSI Water Solutions Incorporated to provide injection well design and construction support services for the recycled water program in the amount not to exceed $493,225, which includes a 10% contingency budget executable by the city manager. And also authorize an agreement with GSI to provide design and construction support services for the Morrow Basin Extraction Well Project in an amount not to exceed $184,352, which includes a 10% contingency budget executable by the city manager.
I'll second.
Thank you. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries 5-0. Future agenda items? To my right, to my left. I, I'm just gonna do one.
I do have one. Sorry, I, I can go after you though.
Nope.
Oh, I am wanting to get councils, um, I don't know what the word is. I guess, feedback or, or approval. I am wanting to continue doing town hall meetings, and I, it, the way we interpret the, the, the policy, thank you, is that because it's an election year, there's a, there's a barrier around that. But I feel like maybe we need to look at that policy, because for one thing, we didn't allow for if there's no, no one else running. We didn't look at if there's, you know, there, there's just different scenarios that we didn't look at. And also, if you're not running and you, you're meeting about something that's completely not political or not contentious, then why would that be an issue? And so I was just wanting to, yeah, just see if we could have a discussion further about that.
And you're asking for support for this for future agenda item? Have you already reached out to staff for clarification prior to asking for this as an?
I did talk to the city manager about that, yeah.
And there currently is, refreshing my memory, there currently isn't a rule against it as long as it's not city resources, right?
No, there's no rule against it. I am, however, like, for instance, one of the issues I'm considering, I'm wanting to do is homelessness. And I just don't feel like that's an issue that's really going to be coming up in the election, or, I mean, it might, but it, it's not like, you know, so I don't, I don't know. It doesn't seem like, I, I think for the most part, I, I actually, I know everybody that comes to these appreciates them as they kind of wish more people, you know, more community, they're, they're grateful for the community engagement. And I don't, it just seems like, so, you know, I, it should be.
So this is a policy, correct, Mr. Newmeyer? This was a policy? So is this something to come back for an amendment to the policy? Is this something that the council member can address with staff to bring back as an amendment to a policy with some suggestions? I guess the anomaly would be right now, where as of tomorrow, unless somebody else runs, we have nobody opposing us, so then, yet we're still held to those restrictions. So, and, and those, I guess we didn't address, or those who are not running, like these two council members who are holding the town hall meetings, are they still subject to that rule? So I, I think maybe looking at policy amendment?
Yes, the council policies and procedures were amended relatively recently to provide for the use of public facilities for council member town halls. In there, there was a provision that provided that during election season, that use of city facilities, no charge, would not be allowed. And it was just a, just a black and white, like, prohibition. Councilmember Landrum and I did talk about this, and I suggested that if there was a desire to change that, then we would simply have an agenda item that would amend the council policies and procedures.
Sure. I will support you.
Yeah, me too.
So, how would that work? So, if I want to do them kind of, you know?
Why don't you have that conversation with him, and then you can bring it back in a?
Okay, well, I'm just trying to like direct, like if it's at the, because also there is an option, I would think there's an option where I could just, council could grant that I could do this, you know, I don't, is that what we talked about a little bit?
City manager.
So my understanding of the policy is, as a city attorney explained, the policy the way it is prohibits any council member to conduct any of the outreach activities during election time. It doesn't matter you are running for election or, or not. So all council members. I agree with city attorney, if at your, at a city council, city council collective desire, you'd like to amend the policy, that certainly is your, your, your desire, is, is we can bring something for city council to make decision on it, whether you, you like it or not. The other option I suggested as a consideration for Mayor Perkam Landrum was to, to actually make an item at the city council meeting, and then to ask for your, together to ask, hey, I would like to do these meetings, list them up, and then I would like the city council's approval for this meeting to be held free of charge because whatever reason. And, and then that can happen concurrent with the policy amendment or, or separate from it. Again, the policy, if you, you adjust a policy, then you amended it, and then that's going to, the policy's going to be there for, forever, until you amend it again. And if you just want to deal with case by case, then the other option whereby council member Landrum bring the situation before you as a request, and then you collectively can decide that's appropriate.
So I would do that right now. Now, bring, ask, ask for the future?
You can.
It, it seems like it would be easier for staff at the moment for me to just ask.
Because I, I'm going to defer to city attorney on this matter. My concern is that this is not a agenda, a genized item, and you could bring up as a future agenda item.
Okay.
Then city council can, can give you permission or, or not. However, it's not a genized, this matter is to request an item to be placed on the council agenda.
If I could suggest, I think, a simple solution here is that at the next meeting, or as soon as staff can prepare this, we just bring a simple amendment to the policies and procedures, which right now, the prohibition is, well, what the policies does right now is it allows council members to have, I think it's up to nine times in a calendar year, they don't have to go through the normal process of reserving a spot like just any resident of the community in recognition of they've been elected, and they should be able to hold town halls. Alls we need to do is just simply change the two sentences that says, no council member during election season can avail themselves of this fast track, and change it to, i.e., it sounds like, you know, council members that are running for an open seat, you know, during election season, I think that's the intent, can't use this fast track process. So it'd be a very simple amendment to the policies and procedures.
There was support for this, so is there something else?
No, no, I'm sorry, Mayor and council, I just, I just returned this afternoon. I only, I would not have time to discuss this matter with city attorney. I, I, I usually defer to city attorney on, on these issues, but on this matter, I, I, for some reason, have another nuance I would like to discuss with the city attorney.
Yeah. Well, we can, I mean, I guess I've done what I need to do, is brought it up, and, and we can address it at the next meeting?
Yeah.
As soon as available.
Sure. And anticipating the possible concern that we would look at is, we would want to make sure that there's a scrupulous adherence to not using public resources during election season. And so I think we'd want to have perhaps a heightened admonition in there that any town hall that's done during election season doesn't come anywhere near issues that are on the ballot. But that being said, I think we could do some kind of a carve-out. Does that address city manager the concern you were thinking about, or? Okay, the city manager and I can discuss, and we can certainly bring back some item.
Thank you. Anyone else? So my, my last parting before we sign off is to tell Mr. Simons we miss you this evening, Terry. With that, we're adjourned.